I am sure there are.
There's more.
Is this live?
I don't want to.
There is now some.
Yeah, I think we're.
No, there is.
No, they're not yet. You're right. Cody's gonna drive by.
Okay.
And Steve Comer's gonna pull you guys with.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
My husband got a year at the park. So they removed everything. All right. But he's still like jumping back. I'm like, okay.
Really?
I will let my wife.
I mean, I took a year.
It is what it's. Businesses are gonna do what businesses are gonna do, and it's personal choice what you decide to do with them.
Three billion dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
They heard people and they were moving the.
Yeah, it wasn't exactly like.
Well, people are back mainly to drink. People are drinking Bud Light again.
Some people never even thought they were like.
But it's because. I think the things that are most important are your personal views and how you view the world. And from there, like, I mean, I. After that, it's all just over exaggeration. I actually sort of. I can get.
You won't wear an eye.
No.
I wouldn't wear an eye.
It was the first person that like the theory that I was going to have something that they supported him and like gave him the whole deal and he's like, we're done.
Oh, I don't know. There's a whole nother reason why. Not that one. I, I, it's because of what they do and what they, who they employ. And what they add. They're a very.
Pretty much.
But that was.
My, my wife orders from Sheen. Sheen or Timu.
You're live.
Yeah. Are we? No, no, they're not in. They're not in that yet.
I've heard recordings.
Yeah, recording's in progress, but we're not live broadcasting on YouTube yet.
Ah, you are live.
Yeah. Good.
I'm trying to get on.
Well, that's what I mean. Yeah. Right, but not YouTube. Most people. Scandal.
You've been busy, Bo.
I haven't seen anything.
You've been busy.
Are you gonna need help tomorrow? Like at ten o'clock? Because I got.
I'm just glad there's no tent to set up this year.
Nope, it's, uh, it's already set up. We set it up today.
Should we bring like an easy up? Like if that a good idea for places to put that or they get.
I think you can.
We have a big eighty by forty building down. We used to stick a bunch of tents up and then right after the fireworks, the wind goes like a hundred miles an hour. And you're chasing tents.
Yeah.
So we put up a metal.
And it rains. And it rains.
And it rains.
Hey, not tomorrow though.
Not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow.
Eighty degrees?
Yes, it's supposed to be a really nice day tomorrow and which is a complete polar opposite from what last year was.
It's a hundred. Right. And Roger got your red shade sale. Thanks.
The change?
We just went over the bar to the other quick link on the other side.
Very good. So.
Perfect. Yeah, looks nice.
For some reason in the last update, it locked out our YouTube link. In, in a, in a manner of that I can't sign in in the traditional way that we normally sign in. We're still being recorded, so I can upload the video to YouTube after the meeting's over in the morning. So there's still complaints, but if you get any text messages, anything that we're not on YouTube, they just need to jump on.
All right. Okay, that's it.
All right, good. We bring to the Wednesday, July third, twenty twenty four. The time is six oh five P M. And the Town of Wigan's special board meeting is now in session. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Amanda Camilleri is absent. Trustee Jerry Schwent.
Here.
Trustee Brian Flax is absent. Mayor Pro Tim David Erpsman.
Here.
Trustee Bruce Miller.
Here.
Trustee Steve Crowe.
Here.
Mayor Chris Franson.
Here. Next up is approval of agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion has been made by trustee Miller, seconded by trustee Perot. Roll call, please.
Trustee Steve Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Bruce Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim David Erpsman.
Yes.
Trustee Jerry Schwent.
Yes.
Mayor Chris Franson.
Yes. All right, first up on the agenda is Liquor Licensing Authority. Application for a special events permit, American Legion Post seventy six and festival permit application Pope Farms LLC.
So for, um. The American Legion Post seventy six has an application for the special events permit to have a beer garden. Um, tomorrow on the fourth. I needed to bring this forward to you, um, for approval. It doesn't need to go to the state. Um, it just needs to come local for approval.
And then Pope Farms is the same, right?
Pope Farms is, um, an application for a festival permit. Um, that is different in that it is not, um, a nonprofit organization. They are wanting to have a beer garden for our fiftieth, um, celebration this year. This, um. Doesn't necessarily need to come. Um, they won't receive a, a license from us. It will be from the state. But we do need to either object or not object to their application.
Okay.
Did you? Do we gotta do them one by one or do we gotta do?
I do mind doing them one by one.
Sure. Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve an application for a special events permit for the American Legion Post seventy six for July fourth.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Hurstman, seconded by trustee Perot. Roll call, please.
Trustee Jerry Schwent.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim David Erpsman.
Yes.
Trustee Bruce Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Steve Crowe.
Yes.
Mayor Chris Franson.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I make a motion to approve a festival permit application for Pope Farms for, that also is for July.
August thirty.
For the.
August. August thirty first.
August thirty first.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Hurstman, seconded by trustee Perot. Roll call, please.
Trustee Steve Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Bruce Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Jerry Schwent.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim David Erpsman.
Yes.
Mayor Chris Franson.
Yes. All right, thank you for doing that. Um, next up is town manager position. Uh, we have two finalists that we will be interviewing next week. So the two finalists are Craig Miller and Michael Rosari. And we will do those interviews, um, next week. Next up is second round interview questions for town manager position. What we want, what I want to do is we need to come up with questions, um, for next week. One of the interviews is on Monday and one is on Friday. And then we have a board meeting on Wednesday. So, um, I would like to get the questions set. So that way we're good to go. We will have, um, two panels, the Board of Trustees, and then the second panel made up of, uh, town staff and, um, Matt Lopatic. So it'll be Bo, uh, Doug and Nicole and then Matt. So, um, I would like the questions for those guys focused on like working relationship, H R kind of stuff, that kind of stuff. And then, uh, are questions more town driven? Board, that kind of stuff. So hopefully you all came up with questions. That was your homework. And don't tell me you let me down.
I got enough homework, Chris.
Bruce, no, you don't. You don't work.
You're not married to a warden.
No, but Bo is. Um. I don't care. You guys can come sit up here if you want. Cause we're gonna discuss questions and everything. Do you need a piece of paper, Doug? Here, Nicole. I worked off for you. Tell me what you got. Did you bring the, the list of previous que? We can base some off of that. Some off of that, but also.
I don't have mine.
We can do. Nicole's got you covered.
I'm writing out.
Yep.
That's it. Thank you.
Oh, I did. No, I only got one.
Mayor, I like, uh, the ideas regarding economic development in the town.
Yes.
That that is a big one. I think that's an appropriate second interview question.
What's number eight?
That would be number sixteen, under community and leadership.
So I circled number eight on this one.
On this one.
What is your approach to economic development and attracting new businesses to the town? Okay.
I also like the concept just in general of, um, being a little bit more scenario driven in a second interview.
Yes.
I think that's where you get to see applied knowledge take place. Um, so like even like number forty one on this, there's a conflict between two residents that you're unable to resolve. How would you proceed? I also had one that's not on here. It probably isn't one of these. But like describe for us a time when you and one of your town staff members did not see eye to eye.
Mm hmm.
And what did you do to resolve that situation? And I need to write that out a little bit more, but more in terms of, let's just face it, you're gonna have conflict with your staff. You know, how are you gonna go proceed in fixing it? And it might have to actually draw out a specific scenario. Um, and that's something for maybe the, the town staff to be thinking about something like that. That's not to the T realistic to what has happened in the past, but something like it. Um, that would be kind of nice to go through, give something similar and have them walk through it.
Number fifty six, maybe a little bit of it.
Let's see. Yeah, yeah, something like that. Maybe, maybe get a specific situation, Jerry, to that, like or mock situation and have them really go in detail about their steps. What are they doing? Um, to resolve it. I'd like number six on. Why are you souring benefit requirements?
Yeah, I think that is a good question.
Question.
Um.
There's number six. That's number six.
That one. Yeah. Oh, do you?
No.
That's three do.
Big sheet.
Oh, are yours more driven towards?
H R.
H R stuff. Okay, perfect.
We have a different test than you do, Chris.
All right, well, that's probably good, cause I don't know if I'm gonna pass this one.
We did, like, one.
Yeah.
Yep. Like number, even number ten, under town staff. What do you view the town manager's role to be in working with staff, town employees and citizens?
Yeah, breaking down the role in each.
One of them. Yeah, the other one is not a resident.
So that i- it, that provides just a s- a small challenge in terms of having uniform questions when that's the case.
Yeah.
Same thing in our line of work when you have someone who's within our agency going for like a promotion and then somebody who's external.
Yep.
You know, it makes you have to rethink how you ask.
Mm hmm. What?
Oh, how about that? What do you view the town manager's role in the budgetary process? I like that. Um, that's.
It'd be nice.
It'd be nice to know how they think about budget.
Bruce, I'm just gonna put your name next to that one. You're asking that.
I'll, I'm gonna tweak compression a little bit for you, so it's. I'll get that prep for that. Give you Bruce.
Bruce, for you wanting volunteers, you're kind of malice.
True. I don't know. Another one I think is that seems to get brought up a lot in interviews is talking about giving a deadline to get something done and you didn't meet that deadline. What was steps, you know, what did you do? To ensure that that was communicated and that you actually got, got it done, but you didn't meet the deadline. I need to write that one out.
Kind of trying to take notes so I can.
Oh, good. Cause I'm not a fast typer. If my computer would listen to me.
About number twenty seven, what's your approach to managing land use and zoning issues within the town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just see what the view is. And we could parlay that with twenty three, where how do you handle public relations and media inquiries related to town affairs?
I E. Facebook?
Well, we know you're a warrior, so I mean, that's fine.
Same me and Doug. We'll get it answered.
I know you will.
Doug repeats my comment most of the time. He paraphrases. The parade starts at seven thirty. That's what I write. Doug writes. So we put out a flyer that states that the parade starts at seven thirty. We do this so that everyone can be up there. Yeah, just more in depth. I, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Just look at what the.
I always wait for the, for the comments that Doug likes to bring forward. That usually makes me giggle.
Are you sure you don't want that Wiggins Community Facebook page to be the panel? I mean, what, what, I don't know what we're doing here.
Oh, what kind of questions?
Yeah.
The three that I have marked, um, what, what, why do you believe you're right? Why do you believe you are the right candidate for this position and what makes you stand out from other candidates who may be applying? Describe your process for managing projects or your management style and explain to me how do you support an employee who is not meeting expectations?
That's a good one. I think fifty four is a good question and maybe it just needs to be worded different.
Yeah, I don't even know why it's worded the way it is, but I get what you're getting. It seems like it's just typo'd up, but. We can fix it. Explain to me how you deal. Yeah, how do you deal with being overwhelmed or underperforming? We need to reword that, but.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, what's your coping mechanisms for when the going gets tough?
Think back to that question. That's what I did also.
Yeah.
I kind of want to know about the, uh, this one is sixty eight. What are your preferred methods for giving feedback and coaching to help your team members improve?
Can you walk me through a recent example? I think that's a really, really good question. We've been talking about lacking leadership. This is what we're talking about.
Mm hmm. It's all about coaching.
Yep.
I'm not just saying that because I'm dealing with a situation.
There you go.
Well, you could, even sixty six, what tools and approaches do you think are most important for a team like the one we're considering for you?
Yeah.
You have a private amount of questions, Chris, for each.
I don't know. Probably eight to ten. Well, we don't until after.
Right.
List. There's another list.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, but we wouldn't. We wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can, I'll jot the numbers down and get them from Nicole.
Cause then you might not run one.
Well, seventy six plays into your question, uh, earlier that you like earlier, Chris, on the, uh, how you dealing, you're overwhelmed, overwhelmed and underperforming. And what's your biggest failure you had in your most recent role prior to two to three roles? How did you respond to the situation? What did you learn?
I like that question a lot. That's good. It probably could be tooled up a little bit.
Yeah, but I think the shtick is there, so, yeah.
What number?
Seventy six.
Yeah, you're good.
Um, another one that I think is good because there has been a lack of this is, um, what is your approach to employee performance evals and professional development opportunities?
I agree. That, yeah, that should be done all the time.
I like that professional developments opportunities aspect. It's not just about getting evaluated. But we're all growing, nurturing. But. It's my five dollar one of the day.
Did you ask in the first interview about them working with other city officials or?
That was not a main question.
We just, we just asked how they collaborate with another municipality or organization.
Okay.
Is that sort of parallel? I think one of the things you can start out with, Mayor, is, uh, like, is there anything you'd like to discuss from your initial interviews? Like kind of like, hey, just checking back in.
Open it up.
Anything you have for like. We could also end it with that when you get to, do you have any questions for us? But we should probably do something like that.
Well, I think opening, cause I think through the qu- questioning process, they'll lose whatever's there.
That's, that's true. Cause you're not gonna be focused on.
Yeah, well, yeah, they'll be focused on what we're, we're sending at them. So, yeah, I.
I think you can start there. Especially considering we asked a lot of questions.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be for the H R group. It'd be for the trustee group, obviously, but.
That'll work is they'll go first and then we'll go right after them.
Okay.
So.
And let's, can we, I don't know if now's a good time, but I do want to kind of talk about the process, you know, because at least, um, before the board, I mean, my opinion is those, um, the interview needs to be in public.
Yeah.
Uh, but not necessarily with your other panels, so long as, you know, less than two board members are there. I mean, is the intent to have the staff panel a public thing or is that gonna be more private, like a meeting in a conference room, um?
I'm fine either way.
Yeah, we just need direction to make sure we get it pub, uh, uh, put it on edge correctly. So I don't know if staff feels more comfortable doing it outside of the, the public, um, eye or not.
Yeah, doesn't matter to me.
What about you, Bo?
Doesn't matter to me either way.
They could do it in here though, right? We just wouldn't broadcast it. Why don't we do that? Just not, no, just not do it to the public.
Okay.
They can ask their own questions and then the board will go public.
Sounds good. And do you want to livestream the public interviews? I mean, um, you're not required to by law, you know, um, it has to be a public meeting, but your guys' decision to livestream is, is your own, so.
Our section of it?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I'm fine livestreaming it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then after your interviews, does the board want to meet in executive session to discuss the candidates or do you want to wait until, um, all the interviews happen and?
I would like to wait until.
Week.
I'd like to wait until the next week.
Okay.
Go through both of them and then come together.
Okay.
As a group and then talk about it.
Okay. Yeah, you'll just need to let Nicole and me what, know what date you're thinking up for that meeting so we can get the, it, the agenda published.
Yeah.
Is there a day that doesn't work for people? If we did it the fifteenth, which is a Monday.
I am in Fort Collins the fifteenth through the nineteenth for C M C A.
That whole week, huh? What time do you come back on Friday?
I'm not sure when the last class is held. I don't have a schedule yet.
Can you let me know?
Yes.
Please.
Mm hmm.
And we'll figure it out. Cause we could even have her zoom in.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Cause I would like to do it sooner than later.
Okay.
Let me know when your class ends on Friday. We may do it on the fifteenth, which is that Monday.
Okay.
It's just, uh, so it's fresh and everyone's mine. That work? Okay.
What time are we thinking? Those.
Six thirty.
Monday or Monday and Friday next week?
Oh, Monday, Friday at six.
Six, okay.
Yeah. So we'll be probably like seven. Cause they'll go before us.
Right.
Okay.
Be here probably.
Monday, the eighth. At six and then Friday, the twelfth at six. And can I say, I can say who's on which day, right?
Yeah.
So Craig will be on Monday and Michael is on Friday.
Um, I have a couple more that I like. Which of your prior experiences do you think is most relevant to our open role and what about it do you feel is most relevant? Um, and best prepared you? And how have your approaches and strategies as a leader changed over time? What motivated those changes?
Yeah, like tell, tell us how you've evolved as a leader. Um, that's not, that's, that's a good idea. Uh, she's, she has a completely different one than what we have.
And Chris, just to be clear, you're comfortable with the employee group asking different questions than you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like you guys to focus more on the employee side of things.
Okay.
Um, as like, hey, you're my boss. I want to know this about you.
Right.
And how do you handle situations and that kind of stuff?
Okay.
Do you see any, Beau, that you liked?
Yeah, I've got a couple that stand out, some of what's been touched on, but number one, I'd like them to describe their manager, management style.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, I'd like to know what are their priorities in working with department heads? Uh, number three, what traits and skills do you believe are important to productive management and leadership of the staff? And, uh, two, there are more community related, but I think it's important that we get a feel for how the town manager's gonna relate to the community. And this has been touched on, but in what ways do you see yourself being involved in the community? And what strategies do you use to engage with community members and make sure they're being heard?
Yeah.
That's all really good.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
That's most of your interview right there.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
What numbers were those, Beau? Two, five, six?
Uh, number one was just a compilation of describe your management style based on some of the comments that the trustees had, but the questions off of the, uh, the list that you've given us, Nicole, are two, five, six, and eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry? You're roughly quiet.
When I come up on, somebody else says it, so, okay.
Oh, okay.
Sure we do.
Yeah.
Again, I think for our questions, like off of our sheet, uh, number forty-three, how would you tackle the first ninety days? Are you gonna watch, or are you gonna kick the hornet's nest right away?
It'll be kicking.
I'm, sometimes it needs, sometimes it needs it, honestly, like.
No, I think that's a good question, because if you come in like a bull in china.
Mm-hmm. And then the other one would be, um, number forty-nine. Explain to me what are your goals for the next five to ten years as it relates to our departments?
And you could ask that per department.
Exactly.
You could ask that for the police department.
And then ask it for public works also.
Office?
Yeah.
Fair question for all of it.
Yeah, you could ask that question, but.
Individual for each department.
And each one of you ask for your own separate department. But I think that is a good thing, because where do they see that going?
Right. Do they see an increase in personnel, or?
Well, they'd just be interested to see what they say.
Exactly.
It's ki, it's kind of a shame we don't have an assignment for them, but it's a little late to be doing one.
Yeah.
Because I the formality of the job is something that matters to me. Um, so having some type of like quick assignment where we are able to see something as a result would be nice. But it's too late. Like, not in the interview itself, but like as a prep to the interview, but it's already July third, we can't do that.
Yeah.
Um, but that's food for thought, thought for food. That's kinda nice in positions like these. Yeah, these are gonna be second interviews, and it's Monday and Friday next week. It's too, yeah, it's not enough time, at least for the first one. Right, and then they build it, and, yeah. Yeah. Sure. I mean, in theory, we could do that. So we could have them draw something up and then be, one of the questions literally be, walk us through this. Um, so that's possible.
You wanna do that?
But if, but if we do that, that decision has to be made like tonight and communicated. But it's a good point. I'm sorry, we're, hey, no public comment in these special meetings. It's great, really.
So I have ten questions circled right now. Which is fine.
Ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know you said one that was not on here, right?
Yeah, well, I had two. One was the, uh, questions follow-up in the first interview.
Yeah, I got that. Is there anything you want to discuss about that?
I think I've covered. Um, and I think somebody answered it to like describe for us a time where you, one of your staff, uh, we're not seeing eye to eye, and I address it. I feel like that's more suited for Beau, what your guys' interview's gonna be. Um, and on top of it, I feel like you've got it covered uh, in your questions. So that part's fine.
Yeah, I think that's definitely one we can slip into ours.
Maybe another one, he will slip in his own handling a disaster or emergency.
Mm.
How that's gonna fall into place, if they got any experience whatsoever.
Do you wanna be specific on the disaster or emergency?
We may as well just go flood.
Yeah.
Tornado.
Flood or tornado, I think flood's more relevant, given the history. Especially where it's, uh, so, so.
Right.
Yeah. The lake.
So how would you handle a disastrous flood?
You have experience handling a disaster emergency such as a flood?
Right.
Um, if not, how do you?
Or even any trainings?
Yeah.
To go along with it? If you put that on a document and that gets like sent out, I can definitely look and I think if that happens, we can Fort Smith.
Yeah, that was my plan. I, I'm happy to kinda work out a, a, a draft, and if you guys have, um, comments, send it back to me just individually, I guess, um.
So you can do one for us, or one for the?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Or two separate ones?
There's a lot of small towns east of us that have to base that in the last thirty years.
Yeah, that's no kidding. I mean, I guess fire would be applicable as well, but more current for us is definitely fire. Sorry.
I think if we ask him them questions, we're gonna know. And then we're gonna have input from town staff too.
Yeah, so covered everything pretty well, I think.
Yeah, I think we have a really good starting point.
Is there anything we're missing, Melinda?
No, I think those are all great questions. I didn't, I didn't have anything else flagged on my list.
And again, once, uh, Melinda sends this out, I'll assign you guys questions to ask. You got one for, I already got your name written next to it. So I'll, I'll assign you guys questions to ask. And just understand, and also, like, we may ask a question and they may give an answer. And if you be prepared to ask a more open-ended or a follow-up question to what they have said.
Sure.
To kinda just get more information.
Oh, yeah, dig a little deeper.
Yeah. I guess, and, did you write down the one question? I, I need to figure out how to word it about you were given a deadline and you failed to make that deadline.
Yeah, I, I, I've got some notes here on that one. I'll, I'll try to Fort Smith it, and then if you guys have any other.
Not, maybe not a dead, or even a deadline slash goal.
Okay.
Or that's even falling behind as you know what deadline's approaching.
How do you handle it?
Yeah.
Yeah. What else?
I think you got it, Matt.
Doug, how do you feel?
I feel good. I know Matt has a couple of questions that he came up with. We'll just have to get ahold of him and
Okay.
Get those sweet.
Yeah, and he, he couldn't be here, so.
Yeah.
We can get with him.
But I think that'll put us close to ten. It should anyway.
Yeah, I think I have eleven marked.
Yeah, so.
We addressed the budget and any shortfalls?
Yeah.
Because they're coming.
We asked that in the previous one, too.
How they handle it.
Um, where was that at?
You asked it as a, um.
I, I did ask it as a freestanding question.
You can do it as another follow-up if you guys need them to reiterate that.
Yeah, let's do, because. Oh, yeah, because, yeah. One of, yeah, one of the responses was reduction of staff. They can get rid of me. Um. Yeah. I think we'll have enough from the first round and the second round to be able to choose a good candidate. And make sure you guys keep your notes.
Yep.
I know that's stupid to say, but. Okay. Anyone else have anything? Beau?
On the employee side, we've got it covered.
Okay. Nicole?
Mm-hmm, I'm good.
Bro?
I'm good.
Mel?
Good.
Harrison?
We're good.
Erickson?
Good.
We're good.
Wait, you're good?
Good.
Okay. Awesome. Um, if something comes up on Monday or Friday, let me know. But the plan will be, could you have that out to us by Friday afternoon? Okay, I don't want you to work on it tomorrow, but Friday afternoon, that way you guys have the weekend to look at it. And if you have any questions, send them back right away. Um, or comment. And then, because Monday we have an interview, so at six PM.
Yep.
And then just for the board, if, don't, sorry, don't reply all, you know?
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, reply individual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then staff, it's, you're okay.
Yeah, you guys can reply all. Um, do you have Matt's email?
I do.
Okay. Will you, yeah, will you give it to Melinda, please?
I will.
So she has it. And then, yeah. Look over that. I just wanna say thank you. I, this is a big decision for the town and where we are as a town right now. So I just wanna say thank you to you guys for taking the time out of your day, out of your life, away from your family to help with this decision. Um, in a critical time in the town, so um, thank you for what you guys do for the town. It doesn't go unnoticed, so, um, I appreciate everything you guys do. I might not always say it, but I think you guys do phenomenal. So keep doing what you're doing. Please.
Vice versa.
So, yeah. Other than that, I don't have anything on this topic. Anybody else have anything on this topic?
No.
Before we go into executive session? No? Okay, um, tomorrow's the fourth. Second, maybe the biggest day in Wiggins during the year, so be, I've got candy for the float. I'll have that at the float. We will get on by the water tank. The parade starts at seven-thirty, so don't be late.
I won't be late.
Where do you want us, uh, so we're gathering where again? By the water tank?
By the water tank, because we're probably the fifth float, sixth float. Yeah.
Just assume be there at seven o'clock, probably.
Yeah, well, you should be there at four.
Well, I mean, but at the water.
Oh, yeah, at the water tower, yes.
Jeez, Dave.
Yeah, so be there, um, we're in really good shape for what has gotten done. It's just little tiny odds and ends stuff now, so everything.
You know Vinnie's gonna wanna throw candy, right?
Well, Vinnie can throw candy. As long as he doesn't throw it at people.
I understand that. We, well, we got over that after, you know, the Christmas one.
So I should have enough.
Well, I bought, I bought some.
Bring it.
Got them.
Yeah.
Might have to throw them five at a time.
No.
No.
The parade is long.
We're gonna have a, probably a bigger crowd than we've ever had, and so I think ultimately we'll still run out, whether we think we will or not.
So, yeah, everything is good to go.
Good.
So it should be a good time.
I'm excited.
And we were still getting, um, people signing up for floats today.
Good.
Yeah.
Lots of them getting made.
Hey, did we post the parade route?
Not the route.
Why not? Can we post that, like ASAP?
Okay.
Yeah.
I've had people all over Facebook.
People are not gonna know where to.
Sorry, my pastor's.
And, uh, Mayor, tomorrow, we will be posting the signs along the parade route that say this is the parade route, so that'll be helpful.
Well, that, but yeah, I've had, there's been people all over Facebook today asking how, where the parade route is.
Just a quick diagram would be great, just to let them know.
Beau, do you, do you have?
And that's what I said, the same route, but some people are new, so they don't know that.
We can have Hope post that tomorrow. She, she has a copy.
She has a copy.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's the same as.
Just go where all the people are.
It's the same as the route as the last one.
Where everything happens.
Just for anybody that will catch this YouTube video later, it's starting at the water tank, goes down Fifth Avenue, goes up Main to the north to Second Avenue, Second Avenue over to High Street, down High Street to Fourth, Fourth over to Becky, and then Becky back into the.
Holding the lot.
Lot.
It looks like a boot.
We'll draw it out.
Yep.
The parade route.
Did you hear that?
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
The thing is, most everybody typically just goes to Main Street. Um, that just seems. Or Fifth Avenue, because that's where the action is. I mean, it parks over there and all that kinda stuff, but um, really, that's from Fifth through Main, and then it kinda quiets out a little bit. Um, but it would be nice to maybe, yeah, get spotty, so it'd be kinda nice to figure it out to where it's a little bit more you know, you have choices. You don't feel like you have to get in a row of three or four on Main Street, you know?
How's our vendor? How's our vendor space?
Yeah.
Most of the vendor space taken?
Vendor space, Hope?
Vendor space, is most of that all taken up?
Or whatever. So.
Good, twenty-five?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
For booths?
So you're still taking like last minute, like, hey?
Yeah, I was contacted by somebody this afternoon that is gonna get with Hope tomorrow morning, so.
Good.
And you have the layout of wherever. Because Lada's is gonna set up at like two, I think. Because he posted today, he's open from two to eight tomorrow, or two to seven tomorrow. Mm-hmm. What street? The same. Uh, oh, in the parking spots? Okay. That's fine. I backed him on the grass last year, but he doesn't have to be there.
And Daryl said that he thinks the car show's gonna be bigger, too, so we'll have more cars on
Yeah.
Fourth, or a high street between fourth and fifth.
And you'll be around to help with all the booths and everything? Perfect. Because I can't see those numbers. I'm colorblind. Because I can't see those numbers. I'm colorblind.
Yeah, the Crown Vic's going to be in the car show.
Sweet. Get some pop.
Like, I can't see the numbers at all. Because I asked Bo yesterday, I said, hey, where are the numbers at? He's like, they're there. I'm like, I don't see them.
What time is the car show tomorrow?
I can see like a line every once in a while.
Quarter to five?
Yeah, I'm red, green, colorblind, so.
On high?
You mix that.
Okay.
Whatever, orange color with green, it doesn't work.
Yeah. Where it usually is.
Invisible ink.
If the ground, if the grass is dead, I'd probably see it. Okay, sorry, we're getting off topic.
You should bring your truck over.
All right. Yeah.
Want me to ask my son if he wanted to read that right off and get going to the next slide?
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Well, I actually don't. I just have to say.
Yes, yes, alright.
You need to say that entire thing, but whoever wants to say it.
Okay. I'll tag him on the agenda as executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS section twenty-four dash six, four oh two, four F, and not involving an employee who has requested the matter be discussed in an open session, any member of this board or the appointment of the person to this board or general personnel policy specifically regarding remote work request. I make a motion to go to executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Hertzman, seconded by Trustee Perro, roll call, please.
Trustee Jerry Schmidt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim David Erpsman?
Yes.
Trustee Bruce Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Steve Pro?
Yes.
Mayor Chris Franzen?
Yes. You want? I'm actually going to do it.
Nicole, I can record it. Um, I've got my record.